Good evening. This is a continuation of the Tuesday, January 26th Board of Education meeting. There are five members present, two absent. The board has been in closed session for a matter relating to an individual student and approval of three sets of closed session minutes. Could we rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have public comments. We have Mike Falco tonight.
I just want to take a moment to thank the entire board and Dr. Kostick and Dr. Moyer for going over and listening to us on the last meeting in regards to the field school situation. We know you guys probably all have put a lot of effort and time and consideration. From the bottom of my heart, for myself and all the families involved, we thank you. So I appreciate all the effort put forth for the decisions that have been made and conversations that have taken place and whatever may take place tonight. So, thank you very much.
Moving on to, oh, are there any other public comments? I didn't have anybody else sign the sheet. So we'll move on to reports and presentations. We have PMA projections, and Doreen is here tonight.
First off, just by way of introduction, Finance Committee meetings used to be every month. We are doing them as needed, so sometimes they might be monthly, sometimes they may be every other month, but that's a little bit of a change. And what we're trying to do at the first meeting of the month is make that more of a meeting for reports. So committee meetings, we will report out on committee meetings typically unless there's a special circumstance, the first meeting of the month. And everything that was covered in the Finance Committee meeting, the most recent Finance Committee meeting, is agendized tonight in one way or another in terms of the information that's going to be presented, and the minutes are posted, and there will be a synopsis of that also to follow at the next board meeting. And we just wanted to clarify that because that might be a little bit different than what some people are used to.
Well, while we're waiting for that to come up on the screen, I'll just start out saying that this is our annual update where we come out and meet with the district and talk about assumptions and set a baseline for projections so that we can start analyzing revenues and expenditures for next year's budget. Couple of the main changes from last year are going to be that we now have the new contract in place that was not done last January, and we have some new CPI information. Those are the biggest changes. I'm glad we had professionals here to take care of that, and I didn't have to figure it out. How will I advance? Okay. All right. Perfect. All right. We'll go ahead and skip forward to the information, starting on page four. We're going to take a look, first of all, at your 2016 budget, and we're looking at all of your operating funds in aggregate. That's the education, operations and maintenance, transportation, IMRF, and working cash funds. We don't include debt service and capital projects funds in this because of the project expenditures. That changes a lot from year to year, and plus the money can only be spent for those purposes. So looking at the sources of revenue this year in the budget, property taxes being 84% of the entire budget, and other local sources another 6%, that's going to include all other local revenue, which would be fees, interest, any miscellaneous type of income. General state aid and other state make up about 6% of the budget, and federal just 3%. So we're going to focus on the main assumptions related to property taxes first. And because the district is under the tax cap, you are limited from year to year based on the CPI increase, and that's the Consumer Price Index change year-over-year from December to December, which is released every January. There is a lag, so the January number that came out this year was at the 0.7% inflation, and that will apply to the 2016 levy that the board will look at later this year towards the end of the year. The one that applies to the 2015 levy, which is what was approved this past December, and we'll get final numbers for the levy in the spring, was at the 0.8. So looking back, you could see that it has been pretty low the last few years. Taking that into account, we did reduce our assumptions in the future going forward. We had been using a 1.8% as a projected increase. Because we have another number under 1%, we reduced down to 1.2 and then 1.5 following that. Second factor that goes into the tax cap formula would be new EAV that's coming onto the tax rules in each levy year. So this is additional revenue over and above the CPI increase. So you can see historically, we've had, in 2011, that included the hospital that came onto the tax rules and was later then removed. But last year, 2014, there was $33 million. We have some preliminary projections and also know of some things that are, properties that are coming on, and we've projected out for the '15 levy, $35 million, and $36 million following. I believe there's some TIFs, I believe, included in those, and then $27 million in the years that we don't have any additional knowledge of that. The third factor that goes into the formula is the change in the existing EAV. So all of the properties that were assessed in the prior year, what is their new assessment base? We have had negative reassessments for the last several years, and this year we are anticipating a positive reassessment at over 5%. So based on that, we have increased that assumption as well to be 4% per year. And that really just affects mostly the tax rate that gets applied because you're still limited to the CPI increase on the existing property. Next, we'll look at the general state aid revenue coming in. You can see we've been between the $3.2 and $3 million in the last several years. The district has been receiving prorated payments from the state, starting back in 2012. They were only funding 95% of the entitlement for all of the school districts because they were short on cash. That was reduced in '13 and '14 down to 89%. Last year, in fiscal year '15, we were anticipating 89%, but in the spring, they cut a little bit off the last few payments, so we ended up only with 87%. This year, in the budget that is approved for the Education Department, they have approved 92% funding for the entitlement. So we have an increase budgeted for this year, and then going forward, we've only assumed 85% of the entitlement. All right. For enrollment and staffing, the enrollment projections have been updated. We have for this year, the '83-31, and going out five years, we're increasing just over 200 students over that period. And this is down from last year's presentation where we had some higher anticipated enrollment numbers. And that relates also then with the staffing adjustments. We have currently this year, 660.1 full-time equivalents, or FTEs, for certified staff. Based on the current ratios of student to staff, we're projecting that that's going to stay right in the 60, 660 to 665 range over the next few years. And that is based just on the enrollment. We did not add any additional positions or change any positions that are currently in the budget.
Last year's assumptions, as far as staffing, had additional staff as we were increasing staff in order to get up to compliance with our programs. And so these assumptions are more of maintaining that compliance or maintaining those programs where they're at, where we were in last year's assumptions, projecting that those increases would continue.
Right. Okay. Okay, now looking at the expenditure side of the operating budget, you can see that salaries and benefits are the majority of the district's budget. Salaries at 64% and benefits another 14%. So the assumptions assigned to those, we have now the updated contract that's been approved this past year that goes through fiscal year '18, so we have those salary schedules in place, and we know what those costs will be. Beyond that, that's going to be subject to negotiations yet again, going beyond for '19, '20, and '21. We have tied the projected increases to CPI as a placeholder for salaries going forward. And on the benefit side, we've increased the district's cost for the health benefits at 7% per year. All of the other expenditures, we went through line by line. Most of those were ranging between 0 and 2%, keeping that in the inflation range. Some of the exceptions were special education tuition costs. We increased those at a higher rate, which we have done in the past as well, because we don't really have control over what those tuition costs will be. The operations and maintenance purchase services, we increased at a higher rate at 4%. And then the facility and maintenance plan, as well as the technology plan, have been also addressed in the projections. So those expenditures are going up or down each year within those funds based on the So then taking all of those assumptions and applying them to the current budget, the first column here is our current budget. We have a surplus deficit net of transfers anticipated to be $164,000 to the positive. So then at the bottom, you'll see the fund balances, the beginning and ending fund balances based on those. And going forward, we have revenues overall are increasing 2.7 in that first year, but then they're really close to 2%, between 2 and 2.5. While on the expenditure side, those are increasing at 3 and 3.5% in the first few years, and then dropping down to 2, sorry, between 2.2 and 2.6. So we do have still the situation with the assumptions that we're projecting the expenditures to grow at a faster pace, unfortunately, than the revenue does. So making no changes to the current budget, if this goes forward, we would anticipate projected deficits in the future. And the following page then is showing those fund balances. The 2016 number, the red line, that would be your ending fund balance for all funds combined for the operating funds. And then you can see that as the deficit budgets come into play, that would decline over the next five years. The blue line is where we're looking at low point in cash. Because you do get so much revenue right at the end of the year, in June, with your property taxes, we always take a look to see where's the cash balance going to be prior to that, just to make sure that there aren't any short-term cash flow needs, and we don't anticipate that going forward. And then the following page, we've just added now those other funds that were not combined in the operating. We've added the debt service and capital projects back in, just to give you the big picture going forward with all funds. Still the same projection, though, surplus and then turning into deficit as those expenditures increase. Now, some of the things that we've talked about in the past, but we've not included any scenarios for them yet this year, are the outstanding what-ifs, I guess we could call them. We still are uncertain how they're going to phase in, we'll say if they're going to phase in, but really how they're going to phase in a cost shift for the TRS pension fund. So we still have that looming out there. We don't have a full state budget for this year. We have, the Education Department budget was approved, but the rest of their budget is still in limbo, so we're not really sure what to anticipate going forward. So next year's budget, we'll have to keep an eye on that. There is a proposed change in GSA distribution, which they've talked about for a few years. The latest proposal did show that Elmhurst District would lose about $568,000 per year of state funding if they were to go forward with that. And the third big item out there would be if they do implement a tax freeze. We've been talking about that for a couple of years now, so if they were to implement that for the '16 and '17 levies, for the '16 levy, we know that that CPI is the 0.7% we just received, so they would replace that with zero and only give you the new property increase. The following year, we don't know what that CPI will be, but we've assumed it at 1.2% in the projections. So the net effect of that would be a loss of $700,000 in that first tax year, another $1.2 million the following year, and it would be cumulative. So it would be about $1.9 million coming off of the revenue portion per year after that. So they're all big dollar items, but they're all still in conversation, and we're not really sure what's going to pass and how they're going to implement things such as the cost shift. So they are looking at the general state aid distribution and distributing the funds differently. We don't know how they're going to do that, what the formula would be. So we just wanted to make you aware of the big three, and I think we've talked about those last year. But do you have any questions that I might have the answer to? Or anything that's related to the projection assumptions? Rather quick. Okay.
Sure, Doreen, in the capital fund, and just to get a sense of the assumptions there, we spend about a million and a half dollars a year on maintenance and need to, and that funding is coming from a TIF surplus distribution. Those are both in?
Those are included in that last chart with the all funds. But it's really, it's kind of a wash.
Right.
Those have been tied out so that they're funding year to year.
Right. But that's another critical assumption, is the TIF one distributions continue to flow in to fund the million and a half that we have to spend, and that's roofs, tuck pointing, and stuff like that. It's not additions or wings or anything like, I mean, this is keeping the place running.
Good point. Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I want to kind of reiterate that this exercise is done at this time of year because traditionally, we have to, not traditionally, well, back when we had issues financially with the district, we had to make staffing decisions based on a RIF deadline of March. We had to have a sense of staffing and whether or not we were going to make cuts or not. And in the past, sometimes that has come upon us very quickly, and we've had to scramble to figure out what we're going to cut to make budget work. And we had started years ago with Mr. Proust doing this earlier so that we had more time to do this if we had to, to think about it. So this is a very broad brush, lots of assumptions, very high-level peak, initially to answer the question, kind of how are we doing? And then these parts will get defined as we know more. As we go through the year, some of the unknowns become known, some of the assumptions become knowns, and we get to the end of the year, it culminates in a final budget that's passed in September. So this is the first step of next year's budget. So it starts out very broad, and it's a baseline. It is not necessarily a prediction of where our budget's going to end up, but it's that first starting point from which to start having discussions around where to invest and how to allocate resources based upon kind of where we're at today. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that's why we do this.
Okay, thanks. Moving on to board meeting minutes, are there any changes to, there are two sets of minutes, December 15th and January 12th. Are there any changes? Those minutes will be approved as presented. Moving on to the superintendent's consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to remove from the consent agenda? No? Okay. Sure.
I'll make the motion that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda action items A, B, C, and D. Oh, I'm sorry, A, B, and C.
I'll second that.
Move by John, seconded by Jim. We need a roll call vote.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. It's five i's, no n's. That motion passes. Okay, superintendent's action items.
First item is a recommendation that the board approve the additional extra duty position of math lab tutor. The rationale is provided. I would turn it over to Jim at this point if he would like to make a prefatory comment, but you know, you see the rationale, so I assume that we should be fine with what's enclosed in the packet.
I wrote the memo. I don't really have much to add, so if you have questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
And I know we have the rationale, but can you just kind of restate what the rationale was for our?
Sure. When the new bargaining agreement was settled with the teachers' union, there was a rate of pay adjustment to a line item under other rates of compensation, which delineated working in the math lab at York High School as different from tutoring, which is the rate at which the math lab workers had been previously paid. In doing a review after the contract had been settled, and as Dr. Fitzgerald and I both spent time over taking a look at what was actually happening in the math lab, we discovered that the duties and responsibilities of those teachers was in fact more akin to tutoring students individually throughout the course of their assignment during the day and after school. And so we felt that it was appropriate as an administrative group to use and reference Section 8.1 of the bargained agreement, which indicates that the board has the right to add an additional duty or responsibility and establish a rate of pay for that additional duty or responsibility, which then makes that rate that is established during the course of a bargained agreement susceptible to negotiation through memorandum of agreement or understanding with the union pursuant to the close of the school year, in which that rate is established and that activity, extra duty, is established. So instead of just having math lab supervision, which was the line item in the contract, the board agreed to have me pursue a methodology whereby we might be able to restore the rate pursuant to the work being done by teachers in the math lab. And so with the board approval, it would mean that the rate of pay is reestablished at its prior rate, which was $38.66 per hour, under a new extra duty called math lab tutoring. And so that then will come under the guise of the stipend task force, which ironically meets tomorrow for the first time, as we review all other rates of pay and stipended positions in the district. So any further revision or revisitation of this particular rate would be included in the work of the stipend task force and would be part of a grand memorandum of understanding and agreement at the conclusion of the task force work. That's what's in the memo.
Okay, are there any questions?
Jim, I just wanted to personally thank you for working through what turned out to be a very technical project to reestablish that stipend at the right rate. The York math lab goes back to the 1970s and is one of the main reasons that we can teach such a rigorous math curriculum and make sure that kids have the support, the safety net that they need to succeed in our curriculum. So I want to thank you for keeping it open after school. That is a very critical time for kids to learn. Thank you.
Okay, let's, go ahead. Oh, I know, yeah, right, I didn't do the motion. Okay, yeah, so I need a motion, it's under recommendation. Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve the additional extra duty position of math lab tutor.
I'll second that.
Okay. Move by Margaret, seconded by Jim.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. It's five i's, no n's. That motion passes. Next is approval of the administration of the ACT with writing.
At the last Learning and Teaching Committee meeting, we talked about the state testing dilemma, the change over to SAT, the very likely, very strong likelihood that there would be no state test paid for by the state this year. We indicated that we would recommend approval of, from the board, to authorize us to administer the test this year. We'll monitor and see what happens next, but we explained various timelines of being able to get that done for our juniors and wanting to communicate with parents, what the cost would be, et cetera. We believe it's, what is it, $35,934 to do that. This was explained at the last board meeting, so we're just asking for approval tonight so that we can go ahead, order the test, make the testing arrangements, notify parents, et cetera.
I'd like to move that we approve Item B, the approval to fund the ACT for our juniors at York for approximately $36,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? No?
Yes, I, I want to offer congratulations to responsiveness of the full administration. I think this is a great move, very responsive and very proactive in light of the things that are happening with the state. And I think this is filling the gap that's left behind and this is a test that's not only good for us as a district, it's good for the kids, it's good for the families. So thank you very much for being very nimble and getting this done.
I, I want to just reiterate what John says. Thank you for being responsive. This, this test is also critical for our longitudinal data of the success of the programs that, that we bring to this district and, and how our kids are doing, period. I personally think we should fund this as long as the state of Illinois wants to go a different direction with the, and fund the SAT. I would be in full support of the Board of Education and Elmhurst funding the ACT for our juniors every year. It gives kids an opportunity to pursue higher education. And since, since our last board meeting, when we initially discussed this, I also found out that essentially, the, the kids of Illinois are going to be the nation's guinea pigs for taking the new SAT. That'll be the, the new SAT in the spring will be the first time that version, that rewritten SAT is administered. And you just have to call into question validity. In addition, it doesn't help our longitudinal data. We have been administering the ACT for decades and I'm in full support of continuing to
I also think it is very important that we fund the ACT this year because our students have gone through that process of the explore, the plan, and the ACT. Now, I think it is too soon to talk about what we might do in the future as the SAT comes up. So I think we need to make plans and as we have for this year, and then stay flexible for what the new process might be and what this new SAT might, might look like. So that is, that's kind of where my thoughts are on this programming and this test.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's five ayes, no nays, that motion passes. We have two donations tonight, one from, for Conrad Fisher and one for Lincoln. Who would like to take the first one? Go ahead.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the donation of $1,200 to Conrad Fisher Elementary School to fund basic future needs for Fisher students. This donated is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District. I also want to take the time to thank all those people who made this donation possible. We always talk about a unit district and how we are one district, and if any of our students in any portion of our district need, have needs, then we all need to have needs and be aware of those. So this is an example of how we came together as a unit district to take care of some students who had some particular needs, and thank you for that.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Margaret, seconded by Jim. Okay.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's five ayes, no nays, that motion passes. We have a Lincoln School donation. John?
Oh, how'd you know? I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Lincoln School PTA in an amount not to exceed $7,000 for a school sign and three water bottle fillers. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District. And want to say thank you to the Lincoln School PTA again, being very responsive, supporting their community and, and working to, to improve that, that school facility. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Jim. Another roll call vote.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's five ayes, no nays, that motion passes. We have superintendent's communication.
We received one Freedom of Information Act request, which was granted. This information that was requested is regarding the gifted program and the request was granted. The second item on my report has to do with the instructional classroom discussion, the classrooms that are currently, the program is currently administered at Field Elementary School. And recently, parents have expressed on multiple occasions their concerns about moving the program to Emerson School and have asked the district to consider a phased transition approach in which students entering the upper primary grades would be allowed to continue at Field School until they complete their, their fifth grade year and are ready for middle school. The Board of Education has authorized the administration to commit the necessary staffing for the next three years to accommodate this request. And last evening, the administration hosted a meeting at Field School for the parents of students in the instructional program entering grade three through five and communicated that administrators and other school personnel last evening called the parents of the students currently in kindergarten and first grade and explained that that grade level span will be moving to Emerson beginning next year. And there is also another informational meeting, the date has not been set, but there's another informational meeting planned for the entire Field School in which the principal will explain various space constraints and issues that they will need to address over the next couple of years related to programming. And, and the, the thing to remember is that some of that is fluid. We can only go off the information we have right now, so we're, we're projecting. We don't know about moving students that have special needs. We don't know all of the information about what could happen with enrollment projections. But at this point, we will anticipate that space issues will continue as, as they currently exist, but we will make that work. And we will complete a phased approach with the upper grade level students and, and commit to the staffing required based on, you know, the input that we've received and the board's willingness to support that.
Discussion. All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're, we're moving quickly tonight. Are there any updates from the board? Well, if you wanted, I mean, any, okay, okay. So we're, we can discuss our annual conference, which was the end of November. We have a chance to talk about it tonight. Did you want to, are there any updates from that?
I believe, I, I know that Karen, I know that Karen was interested in making some comments and she's ill. So we, I mean, we put this on because it's continued to be delayed, so you know, it's just, it's just an opportunity for people that, that have anything that they want to share to be able to do that. So you know, it's, it's, you don't have to make something up by, you know.
In deference to Karen, why don't we delay a one more meeting when she's better and can make her comments?
Okay, that's fine. To the next meeting. Okay, upcoming meetings, Tuesday, February 9th, Board of Education meeting. Thursday, February 11th is Learning and Teaching Committee meeting. And Tuesday, February 23rd is a Board of Education meeting. We are at the end of the meeting. Is there anything else? Okay, I'm going to change it. I'd like to motion to adjourn. Come on.
I'll gladly make that motion.
Okay. Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, that motion passes.